Good afternoon, everyone.
What's on?
We're going to go ahead and call the Budget Committee meeting to order. We do have a set of minutes from May 21st.
What page are you on?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from May 21st. Is there any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side. Aaron, we're going to turn it over to you at this time.
There's just a few things I want to say. By the way, my staff is responsible for a picture on my desk, on your desk. As you can see, I have not changed much over the years.
Glad you got hands on that.
That was actually at an online meeting. That's when that was taken. I just want to talk about the budget document just a little bit. It is the tax rate resolution in the front is exactly the same as last year. Of course, you have your appropriations resolution behind that. I want to tell you some of the things that we did to make sure that this budget was prepared on a conservative basis in terms of revenues. Number one, we assume, we are assuming a 95% collection rate on property tax instead of 97%. That amounts to about a million dollar swing on the conservative side. The point of that being for me is that if I was in a pinch and I was looking for someplace to save money, I'm going to go somewhere where people don't scream, at least not immediately. And if you don't show up and pay your property tax by February 28th, people don't start knocking on your door the next day. So for that reason, I thought it wise to assume a 95% collection rate, just in case. I've got a 25% reduction in hotel motel tax, and that's off what our estimated actual number is for 1920. I've got a 23% reduction in business tax. Actually, it's more than that, but I think our business tax number will actually be a little bit higher than that. That $2,085,000 is an estimate. You can look back to 1819 where it was 2.7 million. So I think we're, I think we'll actually receive more than that, but clearly, we've had a lot of businesses that have not been doing a lot of business over the last couple of months, and we don't know when things will return to full for them.
What percentage on the business tax that you reduced?
I put down here 23, but that does not look right, as I'm looking at it here.
What page are you on now?
I'm on the very first page of the budget. This is page 15.
That's what, okay.
Wrong button, excuse me.
Business tax is more.
So is 64, 641,000 different from what it was in 1819? Yeah, that's 23%. That's a reduction of 23%. It didn't look right, but it is.
Hotel motel is 25?
Hotel motel tax, 25% reduction.
And what was 23 reduction?
Business tax. That's what you pay, Mr. Gentry.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay. Building permits, I left roughly the same. It would be surprising to you and me to know that in April, it was up over double. Building permit and adequate facilities tax was over double what it was same month last year. Yeah, doesn't make any sense, does it? That much, that much building activity is still going on. I'll tell you a few other stories, just to let you know that things are not quite as dark as they seem. My assistant, Sharon Lackey, in the tornado, lost a camper. They went shopping for a camper, got to the site. There are so many people on the site buying campers that you have to take a ticket and wait for a salesman. So she then decided she would go to Providence to buy curtains, where she stood in line for 30 minutes before she decided to leave, because there's that many people at the store. So while everything is not roses, everything is not terrible. I feel like we're in much better shape overall, right now, than I would have feared a month ago, especially two months ago. Things seem to be, you know, coming along. That being said, there are still some people out there in pain. And my heart goes out to small business owners who've been shut down for two months, or who've been running at half of what their revenues usually are. The restaurant industry, if you do nothing else, go to a restaurant and leave a tip about twice as big as you usually would. You know, there are people out there that are hurting, but that's several million dollars that we pulled out of the revenue, to be conservative. Love the echo. We do have to replace some of that. Well, I'll point out contracted prisoner boarding, too. If you'll look, this is on page 18. Thanks to the sheriff, you know, we had over $2 million last year in revenue from contracted prisoner boarding. We've dropped that down to $1,650,000. That's lower than the actual number in both of the last two years, but again, just to be conservative.
What percent?
I didn't figure a percentage on that one. Could real quick, but, and then, but we do have some good news, which is we are getting a grant from the state of Tennessee on the same page. You guys will vote on that later tonight. That is $1,590,517. And what that grant is intended to do is to go for projects in IT and capital projects, basically, that you guys were going to fund anyway. So basically, a certain portion of your IT and your county buildings budget, the state has given you some money to help pay for some projects that we were already going to do. So that is fantastic news, and certainly thank the state of Tennessee for that. I'm not going to go through the expenditures line by line. The only increases in there are the mandatory increases for elected officials, the increases in longevity pay. There are no new positions, no needs were granted. I will point out one thing in the expenditure line. You'll have to give me just a second, because it will sort of feed into where we're going This is on page 54. You see, I do have a transfer in there for $431,661 to the Ag Center. If you want to flip over, I think it's two pages over. Actually, it's a little more than that. Page 57. Again, I've got a 25% reduction in hotel motel tax going into the Ag Center. I have prepared the budget for the Ag Center as though the fair will not take place. That means there's $130,000 to $140,000 ticket surcharge that's not there. That means there's nine days worth of rental of the Expo Center that's not there. You'll see the numbers pretty much across the board are down. You know, about half, I've estimated about half of what the Expo Center receives in rent is what it will actually receive. So in order for the Expo Center to end the year without having a deficit in fund balance, they will have to have a transfer to keep it going. Now, if they do better than that, we will not transfer the money. Okay? So if they, hotel motel tax comes in stronger than we thought, events at the Ag Center are much better than we thought, then we will not do the transfer. If anything beyond this, that's where the contingency plans that we've talked about a few times would come into place, where they would have to make some cuts to make it work. I thought that was something important to point out. I think those are the main things. 131, well, let's go back to the general fund before we go there real quick. Please, please.
I saw in one of the papers, City of Lebanon was working on their budget.
Yes.
And it had in the paper that they were considering maybe doing some budget cuts of their money at the Expo Center. I called a city council person, and he said, "That was discussed, but I think we're moving it to another line item."
Okay.
Didn't they sign a 10-year?
They did.
Okay.
They did.
I wanted to confirm that.
They did. Actually, it was 20. Life of the bond.
Okay.
Life of the bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted that confirmed.
Yes. I will say, as far as, yes, sir, go ahead.
On the PEG studio, why did we double the part-time personnel from 10,000 to 20,000?
The PEG studio, let's see. Give me the, give me the number on that one.
56, line item, 58, 9, 1, oh, 58, 169.
All right, you're looking at two different things there. You're looking at what we estimated the actual cost to be versus what the budget number is. So while the budget last year-
Budget was 20 grand, right?
Budget was 20 last year.
We estimated 10.
We're estimating they're only going to spend 10.
Well, the budget was 2021, and the estimate was 1920.
Yeah, the estimated-
Is that normal?
Absolutely, yeah. Basically, every year, if you look in any budget you want to, whether it's roads, or the Sheriff's Department budget, or whatever else, you're always going to see that the actual expenditures are going to be below budget. If you were the other way around, you would have violated the law and gotten in trouble with the comptroller.
Okay, but I don't have the budget for this year in front of me. Was the budget at 20,000 or?
Yes.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yes.
No problem.
Okay. The, so what we're estimating right now, and I feel pretty solid about these estimates, we're estimating, I'm on page 56 now. If you look at total expenditures and other uses, it's actually the line right below that. I want you to look at that, which is revenue over/under expenditures. We're estimating that we're going to end this year $1.4 million to the good. Okay? I've mentioned several times that we were running very strong going into the tornado and into the pandemic. The numbers continue to look good for this year that we're coming out of. For next year, with some of the conservative estimates that we've talked about, we're estimating, using 1.3 million of our fund balance, which is the number at the bottom of the page in the middle column, $11,464,276. So we're going to use 1.3, almost 1.4 million of that, which is going to leave you with a fund balance of right at 10 million. And that's our estimate for the general fund. Again, we will be watching how these revenues come in on a monthly basis. You will have a comparative report every month, revenues and expenditures. You'll be able to see how we're tracking against last year, and that was my pledge to you back a few months ago, that we would give you the same information that we have as we're watching what's going on. I don't have anything else to say about the general fund. On the Ag Center, basically, all that transfer does is balance them out. It just, they have no fund balance at that point. Now, again, hopefully, things are a lot better, a lot more events happen, people feel comfortable congregating in groups, and, you know, hopefully, things turn out a lot better than that. Hopefully, we have a fair. Again, this budget was prepared under the assumption that we would not. Nothing to say about 118 or 122. That's the ambulance fund and the Sheriff's Drug Fund. Or 123, that's just a pass-through. Nothing really to say about 189. You've got about $2 million in fund balance in Fund 189.
What page are you on?
I'm flipping through pretty quick, but I just went through 63 and 64 is the Capital Projects Fund. Highway Public Works, again, this is, this fund, you know, between gas taxes and other things that it receives from the state of Tennessee, plus the property tax that it receives, this fund is very strong. It's going into this with a fund balance of about 9 million. This fund is not going to have any trouble whatsoever. I'm not worried about Fund 131 at all. Fund 176, Highway Capital Projects, you know, it is, they are showing, we are estimating it's going to have a loss for 1920 and a loss for 2021, but it's not going to put it in a deficit situation. And a lot of times on this particular budget, we wind up not spending all the money that's budgeted, so we may wind, we may well find ourselves in the black on that. I'm not going to talk about the school system budget. You guys are familiar with it. I will skip on back to, other than to tell Mickey, we did get the budget for 177 in there. 207.
Page.
Page 96, 97, and 98. This is the landfill. The landfill has a fund balance of about 3.4 million. So I feel like the landfill is in good shape going into this. I'm not really concerned. Again, we're going to keep an eye on it. Debt service, just because you guys have asked me this question, several people have asked me this question several times. I used the middle column to start with, but, well, let's use, we'll use the far column. If you guys will remember, this past year, we raised adequate facilities tax from 3,000 to 5,000. We had a run of people coming in to buy, pay adequate facilities tax before it went up. It has continued. I just told you in April, it went up significantly again. So you're looking at having a fund balance, because the jail has been postponed, and the other projects that were on the table to do with that money have been postponed. You've got a fund balance in that fund right now of $28,464,000. Your annual debt service requirement is about 17 million, so you've got over 100% of your annual debt service requirement in there. That will change when you build a jail.
What page was that, that you got the 28 million out of?
That is on page 101.
That's what I was looking for. 28 million, huh? Where?
Now, again, that's also a projected number. Your middle number is the number that is probably the most, you know, it's where we are at the end of this year. The number in the middle of the column is 24,571. We're projecting that we will add 3,893. That may or may not happen.
Is that AFT?
That's AFT. There are several different revenue items in there, Dan. That is will tax, AFT. Where's my front page? Here's my front page. Yeah, we got property tax in there. We've got will tax. We've got some litigation tax for the jail, courthouse, and workhouse. We've got adequate facilities tax. We've got a million dollar transfer coming over from Capital Projects, which is also adequate facilities tax we make every year over there. So there are several different revenue items going into 151.
Just one question.
Yeah.
The other night at the Education Budget Committee, there was a resolution to add, to help the schools pay almost 2 million. Is that in there?
It is. It's always, in fact, it's always been in there. What has been removed is the revenue that the school system would normally pay us. We've always made that payment out of the debt service fund.
But they stopped paying the revenue?
They're not going to pay the revenue.
Did they fine the million for the adult education stuff? Is that in their budget as well?
Did we, we have that done?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I thought so. I thought so. I just didn't want to answer out of turn.
What was that?
Yes, it's there.
Okay, that was kind of a stipulation, although not hard.
Right. In your, now, these funds, these last two funds are going to be your most volatile. They're still very strong, but these funds are sales tax dependent. Okay? So basically, we've estimated just flat on sales tax, no growth.
Both are March and April numbers?
April, mayor, did we just, you just got an April, right? You saw it, and I didn't see April yet. Yeah.
April of 2020 was 4,437,000. So it was up. April's up.
Yeah. Look, there are a number of things that are playing into this. I don't want everybody to think everything is great, and I don't want anybody to think everything is terrible. Okay? What's happened right now is, number one, maybe economically, we hope that Middle Tennessee, Wilson County, hasn't been hit as hard as a lot of places. If you guys will remember the recession in 2008, we did not suffer nearly as bad as a lot of other parts of the country. Okay? We didn't, our real estate values were not nearly as overinflated as they were in Florida, California, various other parts of the country. There's a couple of other things going on right now. Number one, we, most of us, myself included, got some stimulus money from the federal government. People are going out there spending that money. There are actually people who are unemployed who are drawing an extra $600 a week. With that extra $600 a week, many people are making more money on unemployment than they were making working. Not all, some are still making less. So there's still a lot of money circulating, but what happens when those programs end? Because those programs will not go on forever. Okay? They're not going to continue forever. So just because things look bright today, doesn't mean they're going to look equally as bright tomorrow. What I'm asking you to do, and what I've asked you to do all along, is just be careful and deliberate in your decision-making and your analysis. One month does not make a trend. This month of being up does not mean everything's great. If next month is down, that does not mean everything is terrible. We have to let trends establish. Once trends establish, we can move and not make a bad decision. But these two funds, we estimated sales tax as flat. We did not estimate any increase at all. Between the two funds, you know, there is significant fund balance in 152, which is where we make most of our debt payments out of, it's only $855,000. Okay? But what backs up 152 is 121. That's a special purpose tax fund. That goes back years from when we raised from 8.5 to 9.25. That three-quarters of a cent is captured in this special purpose tax fund, and it's primarily used to build schools, although we do do a transfer to the school system. A couple of times, we've swapped pennies with them. Some of you were here for both of those, some of you were here for one, where we said, "If you give us back X cents in property tax, we'll make an offsetting transfer to you out of 121." Okay? So there are reasons for that, which I will not go into, but it actually saves us money if we do a construction project on an elementary or middle school. It actually saves us money, because if we back a bond on an elementary or middle school with property tax dollars, we have to upsize the bond, because we have to share that money with the Lebanon Special School District. This money has already been shared. Sales tax has already been shared. So there are times when it makes sense for us to do some sort of offsetting transfers with them, to keep that kind of thing from happening. So you've only got 855,000 in fund balance in 152, but you've got 8.6 million in 121. And 121 is really the backup. It's really the, where the meat of the revenue is for the stuff that's paid out of 152. I feel very good about this budget. I commend the mayor, my staff, all of you that I've spoken to. You know, I have two objectives, which I've shared with most of you. My first objective is that we continue to provide services to the citizens of this county that they deserve and they expect at the highest level we possibly can. My second, although not guaranteed, my greatest hope is that the 650 to 700 full-time employees who work for this county today are still working here in 12 months, if they want to be. Those are the two things that I hope for the most. Clearly, the first being that we do our job as a government, and we provide the services. So I'm pleased with the budget. I urge you to adopt it. It's clearly your call, but that concludes my presentation, unless you guys have any further questions for me.
You may not be able to answer this, but it's my understanding, the, down at Eastgate, there's like four or five big industries that are totally destroyed there.
Mm-hmm.
Three of those have moved, have moved or moving out of the county.
Yeah.
Is that going to affect us a lot?
It's impossible for me to say how much that will affect us. Clearly, in the short term, it's not affecting people wanting to move here. Will it mean that some people will travel other places for other employment? Will it mean that they will find other employment? You know, I really don't have the numbers on the specific Eastgate.
I didn't ask for a center.
No, no, I don't, I don't mind at all. Even if I, even if you had told me, I couldn't get, it's not in my power to get specific numbers from a private business in terms of, you know, what kind of revenue, what kind of salaries were you paying, you know, what kind of-
Do you want to give me more of the property taxes that they pay of the industries?
Property tax, I could tell you this. We did a look, and the mayor may remember the exact number. I don't remember the exact number, but the property assessor obviously did a reassessment of everything after the tornado. I got numbers after that was done, I pulled numbers. Our growth, had we, had we estimated a 97% collection rate, like we did last year, we would have been up about 2.4% over last year, even with the tornado. So you still, even after the tornado, would have seen 2% growth in property tax. Because we're collecting a 95, because we're estimating a 95% collection rate, you're seeing more like, more, over half a percent is basically what's reflected in this budget. Again, to be as conservative as possible.
Ms. Fanata, I talked with G.C. Hickson, because we asked about those buildings. They all have relocated within the county. The people that were there were displaced, he said, within the county. They're in to be built back within 12 to 14 months, is what he told. Okay? I'm just going, we had a JECDB meeting last, when was it, Mike?
It was on the first Thursday in May.
Yeah. And that's what he told us, because we just wanted to know kind of when they were going back, and we'd had some conversation with some construction people about building things. Why did some of those buildings blow away, and some didn't? And then the construction of those, maybe being reinforced, or maybe having some safe places as too for, you know, employees? And that's where that conversation came up. I will give you this statistic done by Daniel Cowan with the WEMA and his staff. They had, the loss itself was about $409 million for the tornado. $20,800 was for the 10% damaged homes. $37,269,000 for the 25% damaged homes. $50,534,000 for the 50% damaged homes. $19,913 for the personal property, 100% personal property damage for all of them. And then you had $108,000 for real property that had 100% damage. We prorated those, so they paid 17% of their property tax, because they were there to March the 3rd. So that portion they paid was 21.9 million. So if you total those up, it's about $259,000, $259 million that was lost in property value. They didn't count churches and schools, which is another 150 million. So that 250 and 150 is where you get to 409. But that's what was, that's there. And we got these numbers, because, you know, I talked to you about approaching our legislature, about making us whole like they did in Gatlinburg with the fires there, and so that's why we had to have these numbers. But that will be what we will take to them and ask to help us with that, if they will.
Eric, could you email that out to us, please?
I can do that.
So I guess this year, we'll not have employee raises in the county, because we're-
No, sir, no raises.
Okay.
Only those mandated by the state.
Mandated by the state, of course.
Any other questions?
I have one more. Do we, did you, how much is the penny worth? I always ask you that question.
429,000. And just to put that in perspective, when you're talking about that many millions of dollars that the mayor mentioned, you know, 400 million, is that roughly what you said, Mayor? 400 million?
250, really, on property that's taxed.
250 million on property that's taxed. I want to remind you, because my head doesn't wrap around this very often. You know, your assessed value of property in total is up, I believe, over 4 billion. So while, you know, 250 million is a big number, as a, in comparison with 4 billion, it is, and again, that's assessed. Don't get confused. That doesn't mean we collect 4 billion dollars. That's just the assessed value of property.
Twenty-five percent.
Yes, ma'am.
Appropriations resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Section 12. It's been saying it was 55% for the hotel motel taxes.
Yes.
Of the Ag Center, and it did say 11% for tourism.
Tourism has actually, yes, tourism, tourism has actually been up above 11% for a couple of years now. So I, it was a bit up, what, was it 16, 17%? 17? So we had it up at 16, 17%. And it's just going to keep changing up or down. So unless you guys, if you guys want that there, you tell me what percentage and we'll put a percentage there.
We have 30 anyway.
[laughing].
We have to have a resolution to set that amount. I know we tried before.
We've had it in here for years. This has been the resolution that it's been in, but it's been in there at 11%.
Yeah.
I didn't see any reason to leave it in there at 11% when we're at 17 now. You know? And whether you guys...
You weren't talking the law.
No. If you guys want to, if you guys want this to read 17%, then the Budget Committee can make that motion and that will be in the budget that is, you know, presented, or whatever the proper percentage is, it's right around 17%.
Does 17% equal the amount that's in their budget this year?
I think that's correct. So I didn't look at that specifically, but I would say, I'd say if you make that motion, make it where I can figure exactly what the percentage was, and I'll figure it and put it into the, put it into the appropriations resolution.
Is that 17% of what you planned to collect in hotel motel tax?
I'd say 17% of whatever actual collections are.
Okay.
Just like your Ag Center this year.
Right.
Just like your Ag Center.
So if they collect less, then they'll get the rest of their budget.
Fifty-five, let's put it this way, 55% of less is less.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And for everybody who's on tourist, we're going to have a meeting next week. I'll send an email out to Sondra to have her do that so we can bring this up then. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. I just need the, I guess if the Budget Committee votes on this tonight, then I would ask them to say 17% or whatever the percentage was for 1920. If somebody wants to make a motion to that effect, to put that in the appropriations resolution, whatever, 17% or whatever the percentage was for 1920. That's the motion that I would ask you to make if, if you want a percentage in here.
So we need to do that and, and then a contingency...
Because, because the Budget Committee tonight, in other words, your meeting is going to take place after the Budget Committee meeting.
Right, that's what, yeah.
So if we're going to do this, I think the Budget Committee needs to have it in this resolution.
So a member of the Budget Committee would need to do that?
A member of the Budget Committee would need to make that resolution if they want that in there. Or make that motion, rather.
Aaron, at the beginning, you, you were asking or informing different groups about possible reductions in the budget of 2%, 4%, so forth.
Yes, sir.
At this point in time, without going through the whole thing, is any budget been decreased by that amount?
No budget has been decreased, sir. No budget's been decreased. I do have contingency plans from every single department that I'm in the process of reviewing. And I'm glad you brought that up because I was about to forget to say something, you know? There are certain people that don't have to play ball with us legally.
Right.
And I am so proud of the county government, the officials, because even those people who could have stood up and said, "You can't make us," instead said, "How can we help?"
Indeed.
And I'm, I'm so proud. I don't think, any real wood? I, I don't think we're going to have to do the contingency plans, if you asked me today. But again, I would never guarantee that. And I want to say I admire our elected officials so much for stepping up to the plate when some of them could have said no. They stepped up to the plate and said, "Yeah, we want to be a part of the solution." So my, my great thanks and admiration to them. Yes, sir.
What was the net effect of the April, March and April sales tax? We're off 640 and up. How much, so what is the net of those two months? Three?
Still down three.
Three.
Yeah.
So if we come in three over in June, we're...
Yeah. This is a good time for me to bring one other thing up. When we're looking month to month, like when we're looking at March versus March and April versus April, there was something else happening at this time last year, which I had to report to you guys, which you'll remember when I tell you. We were being overpaid, remember, we were overpaid on sales tax over a course of several months to the tune of about a million dollars.
Right.
Okay? So when I'm, I'm looking at this month, this year, and this month last year, well, last year I got paid too much. Two or 300,000 too much. Okay? This year, they're taking some of that money back away from me, or so far in this year, they've been taking some of that money back away from me until that million gets paid back. So sometimes the swing is not as wide as it looks, you know? And that's another...
You still have two months in the fiscal year of collections.
Yeah. Two months, two months left.
A month ago, I'd have thought this budget was crazy.
Yes, sir.
I, I would.
I, I don't disagree with you, sir.
I'm, I'm very encouraged about it now, given the industry that I work in, because it, restaurants are coming back hard, Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
Hard, real good.
Yes.
Don't know if that'll last, but I mean, the company I worked for laid off a third of its employees.
Absolutely.
They're all back. And, you know, things are, things are going well. We're above last year.
And we can never forget, and we are not immune, if our citizens are suffering pain, we are not immune to sharing in it. And I never, ever forget, I have businesses, people that are very close to me that are developing, you know, possible exit strategies as we speak. The businesses, you know, 50% of what it was or below, they don't know when it's coming back or if it's coming back.
There are large employers out there across the country that are laying off in big numbers right now. It's still happening.
Again, I don't want to be too optimistic and I don't want to be too pessimistic, you know? I wonder, just the last thing I'll say, and I'll shut up, you know, Nissan laid off a whole lot of people. It would be my guess that, and this is completely a guess, because I would not have guessed several things that have happened. If you told me that building permits and adequate facilities tax would have more than doubled in April of this year versus April of last year, I would not have believed you. Would said, "Who is building a house in this environment?" I would, I would not have believed, okay? But I would imagine, a guess, that new cars aren't exactly flying off the lot.
No.
Okay? So if you are an automobile manufacturer, you may not be in a big hurry to call all your employees back to work, because there's kind of a supply-demand problem right now. So again, everything is not roses, but everything is not dirt. We will face it together. We'll get through it. We are in a strong position. And I thank you for your support and promise to be as upfront and honest with you as I can be. And we'll keep an eye on it together.
The housing here is still reasonably priced. I had a friend just went to San Diego, $1,000 per square foot.
Yes.
For a house in Coronet Island area. I mean, that's a bundle of money.
And...
Two to three hundred per square foot.
There's a, there's a lot of reasons that people want to come to Wilson County. Wilson County is a beautiful place. The tax burden in Wilson County compared with a lot of places, particularly in the north, is low. The, if you were looking, if you were coming to this area and you looked at Nashville, not only is Nashville expensive, but it's very crowded and its public school system doesn't have the greatest reputation in the world. Okay? You can look at Williamson County, but again, for the price. You can look at Rutherford County, which is probably a reasonable look, or you can look here. And I know if I asked the 25, there's less than 25 of us here tonight, but if I asked the people in this room, "Where do you want to live?", they're going to say, "Right here in Wilson County." And part of it's because of the fantastic education system that's here. I make, I make no bones about that. So that's all I have unless you guys have anything else for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Fair motion approved. Okay, does anybody have any questions, additional questions or comments before we proceed? Would now, I mean, would now be appropriate time for, to make a motion concerning the tourism, that 17%?
It would, and while it's fresh on your mind, you may want to go ahead and approve your appropriation resolution, your tax rate resolution, and set your public hearing and get that out of the way.
Most...
If you're going to do it tonight.
Yeah. But I, I didn't know if we needed to do that tourism thing before we did that.
Yeah, you would.
Okay. So it's 17% of the 1920 total. Is that correct?
What we're going to say is 17% or whatever the appropriate percentage is based on the 1920 vote. Where it came out.
Hey, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional questions? Those on the Budget Committee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That's unanimous. Okay. Now, Annette, you made a motion?
Yeah, the tax rate and budget, I made the motion to accept the tax rate and budget as it was. I've lost the page now.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute. For the...
Mr. Annette, you prob, you probably want to approve your appropriation resolution because you just did something to change it a little bit. I think that's the next step. Your appropriation resolution, your actual budget. Is that where you were headed?
Yeah, I was trying to find it on the paper.
There's a lot of...
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, appropriations is on six and their tax resolution is five.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor to approve the appropriation resolution. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any comments, concerns?
Two seconds. Tommy Jones.
Budget Committee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Now for the tax resolution.
Tax rate resolution, Mike?
Yes, sir.
So, Mike? Hey, we have a motion to approve the tax resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Budget Committee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is unanimous as well.
You need a motion to set your public hearing at 6 o'clock on the 15th.
Most of the public hearing, is what Mike said. You know, mister.
Okay, there was...
Public hearing at 6 o'clock.
What was that motion again, Mike? I'm sorry.
Set the public...
Public hearing.
Set your public hearing at 6 o'clock. Like, I'm assuming that's what you want to do.
Yes.
Before your county commission meeting itself.
Yes, sir.
Aaron has to get that advertised 10 days in advance, so if y'all could do that for him tonight, it'll help him.
So there's a motion to have a public hearing at 6 o'clock on the night of the commission meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That's unanimous as well. Is there any further business needs to be?
Yeah, you got several things on the resolution.
Oh, I, okay, let's keep going.
Budget, your budget's done.
Okay, that's what I...
At least for this step.
It wasn't on my phone. I looked my phone. All right. And, and the mayor just asked me, Commissioner Marlowe, about approving the budget, but the budget is a part of your appropriation resolution. The resolution just summarizes what's in there. So you don't need a separate vote on that, in my opinion, unless Aaron needs one.
No, sir. Okay. We usually do make a thing that allows us to make corrections to any minor informalities we discover when we're...
Okay.
Yeah.
You want, you want to make that motion?
They don't mind giving us, giving us the ability to make minor corrections. They would be minor.
Make a motion, you make minor corrections to the budget if you find any.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve minor corrections if necessary. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
What is that, anything less than 5 million, Aaron?
That's minor, isn't it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Marlowe, just a question. Is there anything that needs to be done, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Hall, that we need to approve or not because you changed your budget or with our approval, we're good?
No, sir. No, thank you.
All included, so we're good to go. You don't need anything approved. Okay?
So one more question in the end. Request for 2021 budget, request for approval of appropriation resolution and request for approval of tax rate, all that's done, correct?
Correct.
All make sure clarification for everybody.
Okay, there's a request for approval of grant.
I've got that, Commissioner Marlowe. I, I gave the Budget Committee a, a letter that talked about what Aaron talked to you about, and that's the 1.6 million dollar grant that the state gave us. But we have to get it approved through the Budget Committee and the County Commission, and then we apply for it, and then the money can come back to us on July 1. It is, as Aaron says, it is things that we were going to do anyway, okay? So it's kind of like some planning in your budget. So I gave you a copy of the Budget Committee, of three of those, and I will send that to the full commission for your review during the, tomorrow. I'll do that. So these are things that we're already going to do. They got line items on them. And so if we get approval for that grant, when they are sent to us, they will be sent to you with the line items there, to where that money goes, okay? And then that money will be backed out. So Aaron's already put this in the budget, so that 1.6 helped you with revenue, correct, Mr. Martin?
Correct.
And so I just need your approval to apply for this 1.6 million dollar grant.
Second question, is there a payback?
There is no payback, and there is no matching, and there is no, the all it part of it would actually be where they, they could come up and look and make sure that it went in the proper line items, but we don't report back, as I said. And in the packet I gave you for the Budget Committee, I'll give that to the commission too. A lot of frequently asked questions, and they ask all that stuff in here, and the application portion is in there as well. So plenty of reading if you want to read anything else about it, but I'll answer any questions for you. Yes, sir?
One question, I've got in all the high-tech stuff, I didn't see it anywhere. Is that part of it, Mike, or is that...
It's that new system. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay.
Hey, there's a motion and a second.
I got, I, I got a question.
Any other questions?
I've got one question. Can someone point out where the recreation budget is in here? Because I'm not seeing it.
Looking for it right now.
Aaron's looking for it.
It may have skipped a page.
Is it? Because Sarah didn't see it either. She's texting.
Mr. Marlowe?
Okay, relating, relating to, relating to the, what's been, the motion that's been made.
Who made that one? Well, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
I made the, or, mayor made the motion, I second.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, grant has been approved. Green Hill Women's Club?
Aaron?
Green Hill Women's Club?
That's the resolution that's in there. That's the resolution that's in there. Basically, guys, we, you guys have voted already to purchase this property. When we did so, we're purchasing this from an individual. If you remember, there were three payments, ninety thousand each. We have to do a formal debt resolution, which we have not done, so this is simply acknowledging our obligation to pay ninety thousand a year for three years.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Green Hill Women's Club note, ninety thousand, three times. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Unanimous?
Yes, Sheriff's Department stuff. Came in tonight.
Okay, I don't have that one, so.
You actually got, you got three things to do for them.
Is Aaron seeing it? Because I'm not seeing it. He's looking at it.
Let's see, we're one on...
I don't think it's in the budget.
Is it two or three?
Robert, you going to do the...
What we just approved does not include the recreation part.
Wait a minute, Mayor, I think Lauren, can I have a question? Why are we doing this? Lauren can't find the recreation budget, she says she don't think it's in here, so if we approve the budget without the recreation being in here...
It is in here, it's on forty-nine and fifty. I don't know if forty-nine and fifty skipped, it's in my, it's in my copy, and it would be in the total.
Okay, okay. I got it. Okay.
I've got it in mind.
Okay, okay, as long as you got it. It's for all of you.
You have forty-nine fifteen?
Other social culture...
Okay, from the Sheriff's Department?
Sixty-five.
I got two line item transfers, department moves money out of motor vehicle into overtime, gasoline and maintenance on vehicles. That's money that's not going to be spent on motor vehicles. That's what I'm doing.
Second. Motion to approve, this is one for thirty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion to approve a thirty thousand dollar line item transfer. There's a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Unanimous?
The next one is, in our inmate commissary account where we receive funds through fees from inmates to, we don't use them items to buy inmate clothing, different things like that, medical, medical stuff, so what we're doing is cleaning out all them line items, putting them over into medical line items, so they're their last final monthly bill as well.
Motion to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve a line item transfer of twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That's unanimous as well.
The next one is probably not on Jenny, but I was reminded earlier by Mayor Jennings, we usually do the, accept the litter grant, which we accept every year, we usually do it May. We're going to do it now, you probably don't have a copy of it, but we will give, it'll be a copy in the packet, right?
It'll be in the packet, and it'll be in resolution form, and Lance told me it's a hundred dollars higher than last year.
Oh, seventy-six thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the little grant, litter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It's approved. Mayor, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I do not.
Looking for one other motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn, thank you very much for being with us.